Hello.
We're gonna turn this one on just.
Testing, testing.
Real quickly, I'm gonna go through this pretty quick, but you got questions to ask them because that's what we're here for tonight. I've got, I'm gonna email this out to y'all, at least the zoning and the subdivision portions with, which have been completed. I've already gone over with Parker. There's still some things that Parker's checking. He gave me some responses to some questions we had for him yesterday. So there's no really tweaks, but as far as the volume of the text, it's there for the subdivision and zoning. The handouts only cover one section there and we're gonna be going over that probably in more detail than anything else, though, if you want to grab a handout.
I don't know.
Paul, would you want to, Paul?
Thank you.
But when you, when we go through this, you'll notice I've got the yellow teal and green highlights. The yellow highlights center my own way of knowing it's something I need to go back, either look up number four or it's just my own reference. The green are things that I'm going to be seeking your input on. There, there are things that I think you might want to look at changes. So we're gonna talk about those in more detail. And then all of the teal, the blue, it looks blue on yours, it looks teal on my screen. Sorry that it's so dark when it printed. It actually is not bad at all on the screen, but when I printed it, it looked pretty dark. I apologize for that. But the blue is everything that's been changed in the existing ordinance system. So you can see by just the volume and the handout you've got, there's been quite a few changes and you'll see more as I start going through this. But a lot of these changes are things we've had problems with over time. We're, we're kind of used the old ordinance that we had as a format for a place to start, but we have actually plagiarized a lot of other people's ordinance that's been putting this together. We've taken bits and pieces. A lot of it we've built ourselves just from experiences that we've had, the problem we've had with the old ordinance. The old ordinance was adopted back in the late nineties, I think Andrew Bangs' mayor when we did that. And we actually had a committee that met half a dozen times with our consultants. We had members of the city council, planning commission, and the public on that committee, if I remember right. And remember the business owners that were on that committee from around town. So we had a lot of input into that thing, but my God, that's 25 years ago. We've done that original, written. So it definitely was trying to take a strong peek at this. We're calling this a comprehensive development code, which is different than what we've done in the past. In the past, you had a zoning ordinance, you had subdivision ordinance, you had all these other various ordinances. They all pertain to development, but when we adopt this one, it will actually have all these elements built into one, one code. It will have something, it will have subdivision, it will have water standards, it will have street standards, it will have excavation standards. It will have stormwater standards. Everything's gonna be included in one code. Communication towers, signs, parking, all that stuff. It's gonna be built into one code. And again, I'm not gonna talk a lot on these changes that I've made. A lot of them are just for clarification purposes. If there's something I need to highlight, I will if I go through this. But a lot of these changes were just additional information that I felt was lacking in the old one. They always lacked a lot of specifics. A lot of it has to do with putting information in places that we can find it easier. Putting all the fees right at the beginning of the ordinance, all the application information at the beginning of the ordinance. Cross referencing it. So when you look to see what application is necessary, you can go to that section and totally find it. It's gonna make it a lot easier for us to manipulate or instead of having to go through the whole process of finding what we're looking for, hopefully we'll be able to draw a reference and get there quicker. Same thing with fee schedules. Fees are something that I've got highlighted in green that I think, and I can send these to you individually if you'd like. But it's got these fees that have not been adjusted in at least five years, seven, a while.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want us to do a comparison of other cities to see where we're at, but I think our fees are relatively low compared to the area.
It would be good to see what everybody else is charging around this.
Yes. So I left these highlighted in green as items that we needed to be talking about. Preliminary plat fees, we did adjust a couple of years ago, so I did not highlight them. We did increase though, it's probably not, it's been anything really.
Now is that something that we hire engineering firms, we probably ought to look at pretty regularly since they're, I'm sure they're gonna keep.
And before our expenses on the preliminary plaques especially, is, is the consultants we hired to review those for us, it's costing a fortune.
So are we gonna start charging for lot line adjustments and lots quips?
Yes, I, I, I'll go ahead and do a comparison that I did put in a line for that. But right now, we don't charge anything for lot splitter, lot line touch. There's a lot of time on staff's part to prove them. So both cities do charge for that, and I included that in those fees with the blank to be determined. I did add under the pids, and this has been something that we've talked about. Right now, if a developer comes in and submits a pod for development, and then he just sits there and doesn't do anything for a long period of time, it stays with the land until either he abandons it, sells it, whatever. So we have put in a, if it's charged at start within a year, then the developer can ask for addition six months, but after that it goes away. Because we don't think, as well, situations can change, land can change, land use around it can change. So if they're planning on building a pod development in an area, they need to go ahead and get it built. And that doesn't mean if they started construction within a year, it's okay. But if they've done nothing in 18 months, we don't want it sitting there. So somebody tries to pick it up 10 years from now and build it, everything around it may have changed in that period of time. So this same way large scale development is now, large scale development comes with that exact same timeframe. So if that's something y'all feel comfortable with, we'll leave that kind of stipulation in there.
That's the matter of the same, the large scale development, kind of, that's what.
It's just, it doesn't need to just exist if nothing's gonna be happening. Because you're giving them special, you're giving them special provisions to build that development.
Larry, what was this over here considered that they brought back six years later and?
Pud.
That was a pud?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's a perfect example.
Yeah.
Conditions have changed, but yet they want anything we can do about it because we've approved them.
Okay.
Building permits, unless anybody has any, their party with it on, takes that out. I don't think building permit preferences even need to be in play. So it's a separate, it's a separate issue. They were already in there, but I'm, I'm gonna recommend we take them out. Same thing with construction land.
Larry, I think I know the answer to this, but just clarify, are we only talking directly inside the city limits or the planning area? Is there any of this that impacts the, the planning district?
Once we get into the subdivision part of it, yes, it does affect the planning area. Zoning does not. We're gonna start with zoning.
Okay.
Most of what we're gonna be talking about tonight, we are gonna get into some planning subdivision stuff, but most, it'll be on the zoning side. We have no jurisdiction over zoning outside the city limits by city.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, a lot of this again, the timeline and then teal or blue on the, your, this is just stuff that I've added that's likely gonna be held off. Clarifies who's responsible for what and creates a lot more specifics on how somebody's been, being important to this all.
Maybe because I was party, but are they just start at four?
Yeah, just that handout only has to do with the zoning and use unit. We're talking about that in a lot more detail.
Perfect, okay. So we don't need to be following along.
I didn't send out the whole document because it's about this thing.
Yeah, sure, okay. Yep, don't want it. Thank you.
I sent out the, we're gonna do the most discussion about. These are all definitions. We've had a lot of new definitions in the. Sorry, this is so slow. This is faster when I do this. And just so you know, one of the things I talked to Larry about is taking all the definitions, putting them in one place. It's got a zoning definitions, subdivision definitions, stick all of the definitions in one place. So if you're looking for a definition, you go to that one spot. And I do want to continue to think about that a little bit. I kind of like having subdivision definitions with the subdivision section, just so I don't have to go back and forth as quite as much, but we'll, we'll think about that. Okay, lots of record. This is something I want to input on. Any single lot or parcel land which is record of time documents codes does not need requirements minimum walk width or areas specified in the zoning district, which is located, which was built upon such that merely setback yards, open space, building height, location, parking, loading spaces don't comply with the requirements of the district which is located, may be utilized for permitted use with the arts course and usable open space that reduce, but not to exceed 75% of the dimensions specified in the district it's located. That's what was in the existing ordinance. I'm not sure, 75% is a lot of lot coverage. For all other lots, it's 50% in the ordinance. The reason this is 75% is because this is basically for lots of record that were already there in the zoning ordinance that's passed. But they're smaller than lots before. So they, I, I can understand what the thinking was when we adopted that done that. But if you get a lot that's covered 75%, there's not much left regarding space and green space. So I don't know if you want to look at modification of that or if you want to just leave it as is.
How often has it came up? I remember one maybe.
A few times over the years, and that's over, you know, a long period of years. They've gotten fallen, but it has gotten a lot of.
Is it mainly residential?
Yes, and usually it's outbuildings and. I mean, it may be okay just to only leave, but.
It looks like it's the, it's torn down or something, they're trying to go back or something, or?
Well, the way, the way that works is, let's say you have a, well, non-conforming lot you could, you could build back on.
Well, if, if you want to tear your house down and build it back, you can build back on it or if a tornado comes.
That's, that's, that's if it's a non-conforming use in a different zone class that you can do that. There, there's a difference.
Okay.
Let, let's say you have a residential use that's in a commercial zone and it's been there since before the, it's there as a non-conforming use. If the house gets blown down by a tornado, artwork, that's allowed you to rebuild it. If you tear it down and want to build up a new one, you can't. It's, you would have to leave the commercial, so. This just has to do with the, the use of a lot that's non-conforming because it's too small in a district and been in a, a, a. A lot of the old lots in the old part town are definitely disowned. I mean, they're not even close. A lot of them are 40 foot, 50 foot lots. And they're in zones that require 100 foot product lots, so. There's lots of records, but this allows them to have 75% coverage. And when I saw that as I was going through it, I just seen it pretty high.
Do you want us to tell you yes or no, or?
Any inputs you want to give on this, that's what we're here for.
I'm fine with it.
Maybe a while.
I mean, a little tiny lot, you have a little, little storage building in the house.
Unless one left, no matter what.
If we've not had major issues with it, you know, sort of that, if it, if it ain't broken, don't break it. Well, it's easy.
You can leave it to the neighbors because you're. Definition. A lot of these where I've added them, there just need to be additional clarification. And when I send that out, you can look at the definitions to figure all modifications that have been made to the definitions. This is one that we need an answer on, and you'll find it throughout the code. So once we make a decision on what it's gonna be, well, then it'll show up in different places in the code. But right now, our current code calls for, let's say R2, it allows duplexes and triplexes. So we have a definition there for dwelling two or three family, and then with dwelling multi-family starts with four units. I want to see if you'll consider making that the dwelling design bracket for the city by or more families, instead of four or more families, and add dwelling to two, three, and four units. The reason for that is on a state level, they can consider anything over four units commercial property. They consider four units or less residential property. And I think for, when we're dealing with developers building properties, there's, there's special requirements they have to meet once it's commercial property. So anytime we're dealing with commercial property, we're dealing with five units or greater. I just think for uniformity, it would be good if we went ahead and classified R2, for example, allowing single duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. Is that something you think, right now allows threeplex already, we would just be adding a fourplex for that as well in an R2 zone?
So if there's two rooftops, fourplexes next to each other, from like what Joe Ben's got or whatever, how does, how does, right? So regardless of.
Doesn't matter how many unit or two, your four is residential, as soon as you go to five, even if it's a separate building.
You have a separate bit.
Commercial. And it's, it's funny because the state requires plumbing some mills, for example. And if there's four fourplexes, they'll require them to send four sets of plumbing even though they're identical. The state requires them to send four separate reviews of those four buildings. If there's just one fourplex sitting there, they don't have to do anything.
In the building code, it's single family and duplex, building, residential building code. Three and up are in the commercial building code.
But we've always allowed duplexes and triplexes. I'm suggesting go to duplex or triplexes and fourplex, simply because at that point the state considered it commercial.
Do we have a lot of fourplexes?
Yeah, we have. Like ever? Yeah, I'm fine with it.
To make chances that lines up with the state code, it kind of lines up a little thicker, you know?
Yeah, and, and the only thing that would do is allow you to build a fourplex in an R2 zone where you can build a triplex over there also. Really doesn't change it that much.
Is there any struggle asking this question from a tax revenue perspective or fee structure or anything like that? Is, is there any?
None changing than what we make them do as far as their governance. That's all that matters.
It just allows, allows a fourplex in an R2.
Yeah, that's the main thing that this would do, would make this change.
Whereas right now?
Right now, they can only build a triplex in an R2 zone.
And is that something we want, fourplex in an R2?
Well, now we allow the lower category of multi-family in an R2 zone. That's what the R2 basically is for, is low density multi-family. So we're just reclassifying low density multi-family from two and three units to two, three, and four units.
So really, the amount of people, I think, pretty much the same, it's just.
Probably changed at all.
You're adding a door. You're adding one door.
Yeah, one more, one, one.
A bit, you know, makes sense.
And, and that's the only reason why I would suggest we change it. If I say this way, anything other than R2, they're gonna have to go into, there's some mills for the health department, so.
I think with the speed of growth that we have too, that makes sense to make that adjustment. Back to there's point, the line would stay.
Well, like that changes around. Parker, you may have already answered this question in your answer, but domestic partnership, something that needs to show up in our code? We're talking about people who live in a dwelling. We have some sections that talk about people who are related by blood or marriage. And some of the codes that are looked at from other cities include domestic partnerships. But from a legal standpoint, is that something that is good or bad?
I don't think it makes.
Or doesn't matter.
A real big difference. I mean, this is the definition of family. You've scrolled up so far, you can't see, that's what this is defining what a, a family is. And so for the purposes of this code, we're talking like single family, multi-family, I think a domestic partnership would qualify as a family.
So is everybody okay with leaving that in there then?
For the purposes of this code, I don't think there's necessarily a illegal or civil rights implication here.
Right, it's, it's almost as common as marriage anymore, so.
Yeah, if not more so.
So everybody's good with just leaving that alone?
That is for Parker.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
This ordinance was adopted in 2008, so I'm almost saying none of you were on the council when this was adopted. We will call it the Mo Power Amendment. We had subdivision at the time that the owner was a little bit inscriptuous. And he's kind of got a fight, started to take it back to some of the other builders in the development. Decided to stick it to him, so he changed the covenants on his own because he still owned over 50% of the lots. So he changed the covenants on the size of the houses to a smaller house size. Already had a lot of people that built in the subdivision, nice big houses, they go furious, they try to take it to court, but didn't have like stand up because he owned over 50% of the lots. So we adopted these special zones.
R1, 1200, R1, 1400.
I may have a long section here. I may have highlighted two.
No, that's it.
That's it, okay. So we designed, designed the special zones that a developer could choose when he developed, and it would establish what the size of the house was, because the city can't do that by zoning. We don't, the state won't allow us to have size standards in our zoning anymore. So the developer could do that through zoning, and we gave him the option of having these special zones that allowed for 1600 minimum, 1200 minimum, I think of the 2000 minimum, and built it into the existing zone we already had. So you would have an, an R1 dash 20, which would be mean that in that R1 zone, you couldn't build a house less than 200 square foot. We've never had a developer choose to do this, and I don't think we ever will have it, because they don't like to be tied down in that. But you want us to leave this in the zoning or can we take it out?
Sounds like it complicates it. I think if we've not had a major issue with it, I, I like simple is better.
We've offered to a number of developers and they just.
So if a developer wanted to have a conversation, you could still have a conversation about it, correct?
He can put it in his.
Right, they can do anything that could be.
He can put it in his protective covenants.
It doesn't need to be there.
All right.
Yeah.
Because you can change protective covenants.
You can, and, and that is.
Under certain conditions. The, the, the idea was if somebody wanted to have kind of the exclusive subdivision of only big homes, they could do this, and then by, by force of zoning law, you have a restriction on the size of the house as opposed to by covenant.
Right. So it's a, it's a team to work around something else that.
It was a huge thing at the time, and I, I don't blame most homeowners for being upset and have a right to be upset.
Was that valid?
No.
So it doesn't matter now.
Your, your.
Yeah.
If, if there was a reason though for it at one time, is it fault or inaccurate to say though that it could be necessary again?
It could happen again, can't say it.
Well, the only reason I ask that is because I know there's a group that's building pretty hot and heavy around here, and it's multiple individuals unrelated to each other working together, which is fine until it's not. And so does this give any sort of protection that we might need beyond what we have?
The developer has to choose to do this upfront when he rezones, and none of the developers, we haven't encountered any developer that wants to do this. In fact, they're looking for the smallest house that they can build longer.
So was this thought up by count, like council? Okay, so that wasn't?
Now, this was the city council's response to a group of citizens that were upset over what happened to them inside that.
Which I could see, like, if I owned a piece of property and I wanted to sell off a section of it to a developer, but I did this first and then sold it, that would protect me from having the houses that I don't want beside me when I lose control and sell a house, right?
Yeah.
Kind of like, like the re-razone.
Yeah.
You're right. When you leave the section in there, like I say, it's.
I'm just asking if that's what it would actually be like. Does that protect someone who's like, I want to develop, I want to get rid of this land, but I don't want maybe a certain density beside me?
That's probably the one example where it would benefit somebody. Most developers don't want to do it because they don't want their hands tied.
Right.
But then as JC said, the new owner could come back and rezone it.
Right.
And get rid of it.
That doesn't really do many.
Of course, if you try to bring it back and rezone it, that doesn't mean the city has to approve it.
Right. So I'd say it would have to be put up for approval though.
But, but that is a, a good example of one situation that maybe, maybe there's a use for that. It's sounding a little bit like the forerunner of those, growing, coming in, maybe. It just, it's put a minimal score, you know, because we can enforce zoning, but we can't enforce minimal house.
I hate making things complicated, but I love having another option. I mean.
We can leave it in there.
Does it hurt anything to leave it?
No.
Just complication.
Now, my, the reason I highlighted is because it finished in 2008, it's 15 years, it's never been used.
If we were stagnant on building, I wouldn't be as, I mean, I don't know, like you said, it hasn't been, ever been used. But with as rapid as things are going, you just never know. And if that's an option to leave in there and it doesn't change anything, then I'd just leave it.
And 2008 was another big building time before it.
It'll, it'll just mean I need to go back and add some stuff on one of the zoning class page, but that's just a matter of copy and paste from the old work, and some of it's not to get.
I just don't care either way.
Market problem, a lot of people fell upside down. Yeah, so I mean, if it happens again, would this, I mean, we haven't had another crash like that. Would this come into play in another crash like that if someone?
And that's, that's kind of what happened last time. We were getting into that, we hadn't quite reached that 2009 crash yet, but things were slowing down. And the developer decided he was gonna build a bunch of 1200 square foot vinyl houses in a neighborhood that had, you know, 2400 square foot houses. He made a few people mad. But we'll, we'll. Right. I'll just leave it, that's.
I would. Sounds good.
This goes back to the expiration on PUD, I think we've already talked about that. I did talk about the zoning classes now. Hold on to your handouts. Under the residential districts, I'll add back in a section for those. Our one volume and our one seven fives and with special designations, we'll add that back here. Actually, I never took it out, I got a highlight in your instance. We created two new HUD zoning districts. Uh, the way the ordinance reads now, if you do a HUD, you're supposed to do a HUD in a zoning class that is compatible with the HUD. What? Now that leaves a lot up to a person's discretion to say, you know, the HUD that they're planning with all these different house sizes is compatible with the zone that it's in. So you're supposed to go ahead and already have a zone residential one, one five, one seven five. And then the development that you're putting in, it's supposed to be compatible with that. Well, that's, that's pretty nagging on me, first of all, it takes a while on planning for it to determine whether or not that's compatible or not. So we created a HUD zone for residential and a HUD zone for commercial. And if they do a zoning for a HUD, uh, that's the only thing they can put in there is a HUD. And so it's specific to to zoning and then again, zoning will go away after. A certain amount of time that they didn't do anything, but somebody else could come back in two years later, they haven't done anything and try to zone it again. Or put it in or put it around then. Residential R two, that's where I went ahead and had my attention about the four minutes again. We're going to spend a lot of time, you know. Is if you'll turn it into the four point five three on the district regulations. Lots of much on the residential side is the commercial side, because commercial side is where I'm completely revamped every time. Looking at the residential real quick, again, there's a notation on the three and four, whether or not we wanted to combine those. I think I've got my answer there. I added a vacation rental. By owner, because as plan commission knows, that was not a use limit that was listed in the. Code and we get a lot of requests for that now and we've been. Well, why do conditional use because there weren't, there wasn't any thing listed there, we considered them the same event for instance, we've been getting so much, I want to add this listed that as a separate. Uh, lineup now, now it looks like the state may prohibit us from zoning vacation rental by owner, period. So we're going to watch that legislation and see how it progresses, but we may end up taking that back out again. We'll see.
Be the state.
The state has a bill right now that would basically say cities can't regulate those laws, period.
Who does? Because I know like some places when you try to buy, it says cannot be.
You can still probably put it in a technical. But a lot of cities zone or and a lot of them do it by conditional use. Uh, where we kind of problem is some of the more touristy type destinations by cost bring where they get whole lot of neighborhoods of these things. Bring that property value to the people that, you know, actually live there and, you know, you get one homeowner and he's grounded by thirty vacation rentals. It's.
That's what I was talking about, is that I saw.
The state is looking at, uh, basically they're going to pull any, any jurisdiction the city would have to regulate if they're going to end, if if that passes.
Was it the bill or? House bill or something?
House bill, I think, but don't look me on that.
I think it's a house bill.
I was, I was just on municipal league meeting, they went through all the bills and where they stood and opposition and. I don't remember that.
I'm sure the rest would, I'm sure.
Would be against it, but I.
I'm sure they're against it, because again, it's the state and the cities, what they can and can't do through zone.
I didn't, I don't remember that one.
I've got more than six operable vehicles. Highlighted there, I think that warrants some discussion. Uh, that's what the code says now. So if you've got somebody that owned a house in Tarragro or into this, they can't have more than six operative vehicles. Do we want that left in the code or take it out of the code?
What does it say how many?
And that may change from day to day.
And if there's a zoning ordinance and it's been there for years. I'm not sure we've ever.
Do you think it's high or low?
From my personal standpoint, I do think it's high, but I don't know. I don't know if it's our job to thank you and tell somebody else, I don't.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of the family, because they've got three kids and they all drive and one of them, one of them at the work.
And that's why I hide one.
Think I'd rather is hyper focus on where they can park the vehicles and not park it all.
By code, they're required to have parking.
Right.
Obviously, they have six vehicles.
So 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 that's where you don't have to limit the number of vehicles if you have solid code, the other correction of how to store the vehicle.
So do we just want to eliminate that then probably? Is that the consensus?
Yes. Well, is there, is there a reasonability though of if I have? Twenty cars or whatever, so if we take it out completely.
I said, when does it become a call line?
Right, yeah.
I think six is too many. I don't know that we should regulate.
Well, but to Doug's point, you know, I'm thinking as soon as Aubrey here, Henry starts driving, I'm I'm there.
You can get there really fast.
So.
Oh, my house looks like a used car.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot.
But I, I tell you, it doesn't look good though, you know, if I find my name, I'm probably mad at me.
Right.
People want about it.
But I do think the focus on where you park and how you park regardless of the number is the way that it works.
I think that's the bigger deal, making them actually have a driveway. Just near their spot in the yard they park and that kind of thing, make sure they're gonna have a.
I think in a sense, it's not getting melted, you think we should take that out? Is that right?
That short term rental Senate Bill one ninety seven.
Yeah.
It is a Senate bill?
Yes, and it's, it's a pause, but he just didn't spend any time talking about it, he just said the pause.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and delete. The reference vehicles there. Move on to.
I literally wrote like said my phone errors and stuff on this side.
Yard size and stuff, let's, let's go back to the state on the youth, so go to the commercial.
You have noticed I have four. Under four, five, three, two, plus three. And you permitted a house and building on a territory. With accessory structures, accessory structure.
He put it in blue that he'd recommend these be changed to conditional. I got you.
So you're just implying that the developer should fence off a lift station, the full houses are built or? Well, I think, I think my comment had to do with the fact that if, uh. The way it reads now is public utility substations and pump stations are permitted in any zones. I think probably that should be, that should be changed to conditional as well. There are going to be neighborhoods that you're not going to want a pump station for various reasons. And I think there should be some kind of process to review that as opposed to them just being permitted outright. I think that's what my comment in front of it did.
So you just want that to be a conditionally. That's fine.
That's what that was, thank you. Like I say, we'll go back to the lot side of the law, I'm going to have to. Let's go to, uh. Section four point five point four, all the digital commercial uses, I did not highlight all the green, this is all. So we're not talking about all of this really. I know that's a lot to go over, but I put in the use of the, I thought they should. This, this embodies the new commercial zones that we talked about. Uh, CBD of course has always existed, that's, uh, the downtown district. P C is thoroughfare commercial, so that's basically you're looking at your main thoroughfares is where we're talking about the thoroughfare commercial. That would be highway sixty two, uh, did we do Moss Street? Rudy, you remember Moss Street Thoroughfare Commercial?
Maybe south.
South Mark.
Yeah, I don't remember who we want to.
But it's going to be our main collectors like the highway is what we're talking about. Um, and then you've got the commercial mixed use and the residential mixed use. Commercial mixed use is going to be your higher, um. Your bigger commercial uses, because basically you're talking about commercial uses mixed with some multi-family like apartments and stuff like that. Whereas residential mixed use is going to be more primarily residential than has a few commercial uses. That are intricate with a neighborhood like coffee shops, cleaners, things that you would use in a neighborhood for the neighborhood. So residential mixed use is really your lighter commercial uses. And commercial mixed uses, your heavier commercial uses that also allow apartments and stuff like that. And then thoroughfare commercial, just about anything, that could be your Walmarts and your loans and anything that might go in a, uh, along the highway. So when we're talking about uses there for apartments, uh. Downtown, they would be conditionally approved, thoroughfare commercial, they would be conditionally approved. Um, commercial mixed use, that's really what they're intended for, so I put yes, and then residential mixed use, they're conditional. Apartments with a business above, we would implement those in all districts, all commercial districts, whether or not they be mixed use or not. You'd be able to have an apartment with, uh, above a business. As long as the business complies with the zoning that it was located in, so. If you have a apartment and a business in a mixed use residential district. The business could be a coffee shop or something like that, whereas if you have an apartment over a business in a commercial district, it might be a heavier commercial use for a apartment. Just look through some of these other appliance sales, I mean, there's times I was here, if you can see how I've marked them. And if you see anything that you think needs to change, let's talk about it.
Do we have, do we have anything Larry for, uh. THC, uh, for medical marijuana.
Anything in blue here, stuff that I added to put in the old ordinance?
So with that, if it's not there, does it come up as conditional use?
The ordinance reads down, the way we deal with these now, we do get people all the time that are applying for something, it's just not. Then it automatically goes through planning mission, they make a determination whether or not it, uh, is compatible with the zone. And then it's supposed to be added back to the zoning after that. But you want me to add something for dispensaries, I guess would be.
Is there tobacco, I saw a liquor store, are there tobacco? Is that on there?
And that's probably where we.
Tobacco along with the CBD, I know that they're. They vape shop.
You want us to rehand around that and add dispensary?
I just know they're mopping up everywhere and it'd be good to think about. CBD and Delta A, Delta nine and stuff and all that popping up everywhere.
But just kind of glance through those and see if you see anything that you think needs to change.
My gold school, just call them headshots.
Like I said, the ones in blue or the ones in the old ones.
And we recently added the gym, sure.
Gyms, I put two class categories for large gym and small gym, because large gym has a much bigger impact. It might, small gym might fit in downtown, whereas large gym let off to. Mini store rental on Dr. Green there, is this guys, we talked about this, but do we want to take it out of the commercial and put it back in the manufacturing only?
Yes.
Discussion we've had during this whole process of visiting, trying to get it out of the commercial zone.
I screamed it big, yes. We won't even have to call it when that one, right? Let's just be honest on that.
So the only place you'll be able to put a storage complex in to appear out will be if it's in areas on the manufacturer. There aren't a lot of those, I mean.
Sort of saying like we.
We've got plenty of ways, we don't need.
That was going to be the question, because as much as I can scream yes, if y'all want more, this is our chance to say it, but I feel like we have a lot. And we surely don't want to lose our top. So whatever we can protect or not.
Yeah, they've already lost too much. The only thing that's in the back of my mind, that if you go through Bentonville and Rogers, there's starting to be more of these. Storage facilities that are multi-level, temperature control, really not, they don't look like storage facilities themselves. Is if somebody wanted to invest a whole lot of money into something like that, I hate to not consider them.
Is it something where it can be conditional use or?
Make them conditionally use. Yeah, I think the biggest issue we had while we're going through on the plan set, we saw all those commercial land, prime. To uses that aren't generating any sense that. Indicially use and planning commission is going to have to justify why they can't put it there, and that can be tough when you're just saying because we don't like storage buildings.
Well, that's what, the precedent would be so hard to get past.
Speeds now.
No.
And I think I know the answer is there's nothing legislatively that we can do to actually. Generate some revenue from, you said there's no taxes collected on storage buildings, do you mean this probably have a chance to do anything?
Twelve years ago, I think longer than that, the state changed the sales tax laws where they did have to pay sales tax on storage units. Next legislative session, two years later, their, their folks were able to generate enough power to get it reversed. For two years, they paid sales tax and that was it.
Didn't.
The city can't make up that long.
Tender more.
Can we not raise the permits though for that? Type structure?
You're good, but I think if you establish the rate, Parker, you correct on this, if you establish the rate that looks like it's just intended to keep somebody up. It could get us in trouble.
Right, yeah.
I mean.
Who determines? What?
A court.
Right, but who determines it?
If you're charging a permit rate for this type of construction. And a type of construction comes in like a storage building that's similar and you're charging them three time tarer, obviously they might have grasses. You, you're never going to make up not getting tax revenue with a permit fee.
No, I just need more to. Uh, disentourage people.
Just stick them in duck grill.
Believe we have enough and we have a little bit of room left and and. An overlay on bypass. Somebody could always come back and ask for manufacturing zone.
Right.
Don't need to change.
I mean.
They're doing overlays.
On some of this was like, when you just put the storage facility right on the thoroughfare, it doesn't look as nice, but if you required. Some kind of commercial, whether it's a strip or whatever parking facility and that be behind it. You know, like it doesn't, you're not wasting that spot, but how do you put that into the code? Is that where the overlay comes in?
There are some cities doing, they're stuck with design, design standards for short guns. And they're adding some language to at least make sure that they're not right, they're making them setback harder and some things like that.
Because even that one that's up the road, you know, I can see where like the business beside it would be like, you just, you can't see means now because. You're blocked. Now, from the other direction, it's okay, but from that direction, it blocks, and so that's where a setback would be handy.
That's another option, is just is come up with a whole different set of setbacks or requirements for storage buildings. That are different than other, that other type of offices, that, that I think would hold up.
And some of the nicer ones in some of the bigger cities, like you're talking about, are tri-level and all that, but even them, they're setback some. But they're like, they're offices and rentals and stuff that are kind of the forefront and your industrial side of it is all behind. And so if we can address it that way, not that, I don't think you're going to get. And so if we can address it that way, not that, I don't think you're gonna get many more anyway, but if you were, you know, at least that protects your thoroughfare at least, if not, do the industrial and you protect yourself from that completely.
I do see, hey, take it over a good property and put mini storages.
And, and I will say in the last three months, I've had at least three inquiries about more storage. None of them have been RVs though, but in a lot of ways, those are worse for me because it's all up there.
It'd be interesting if there's some, that over time, if you look at a occupied versus unoccupied, so, you know, if you infer storage buildings or unoccupied buildings, then maybe you can put some, some differences there.
We, we did in our permit fees a couple of years ago, I don't know if you remember, but this is my fault, we're actually charging them less for permits now because it wasn't occupied space and because they take up such a huge area, we were charging sport footage fee, didn't seem fair because they didn't. Their construction's not the same as an office building, it doesn't have all the life safety stuff that we have to look at. And, uh, the storage buildings there on sixty-two is, uh,
Most beings and.
Their permit fees were forty thousand dollars, something incredible. And so we actually reduced them for un-unoccupied structures, were cheaper than occupied structures.
See now, I think, you know, if we had to think right now, we'd probably actually. Let's still get on the spot, because you have to. Right.
So moving to manufacturing, everybody good.
You have gift and novelty on there twice.
I don't know what kind of store that is, but.
You have it under G for gifts and then you have it under N for novelty. But then on the second one, you also have tobacco and candy under it.
We'll make that all within category. Anything else, anybody?
Are there, are there, I know there's flea markets, are there, wha- whatever we would call like a resale, uh, thrift store, there's thrift down there?
We probably want those into the same category that.
Yeah, there's, uh, and, and there is another thrift store downtown, uh, life.
So you want me to add thrift?
I would just, I would think that's a category that, uh, that.
On the thrift store?
We have a category for, uh, video cassette and sound.
That's funny because Ellison asked me in the car on the way, the phone, maybe their CD was. We got to have that. So I think, yeah, I mean, those sets are probably.
I've been thinking about starting one.
Have all my old Disney ones.
So Larry, what ordinance actually says you can't live in a commercial building downtown? Without a conditional use? The zoning?
Yeah, zoning lists, uh, having a multi-vex use as a conditional use, so.
Dance studio, like the gymnastics, is it?
Uh, probably.
Is that a dance? Studio photo musical, but is that like? Musical stu-, is that like, you know, that could be like recording studio rather than a dance studio?
Or like a photography downtown, that may be more of what that is.
What needs to be included in that?
Well, we're thinking with certain gymnastics.
Yeah, dance gymnastic cheer.
Should it be the same as a gym or?
Small gym.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, because even like, you know, a lot of the fitness centers, not necessarily gyms, like One Day and all of that, or more just open spaces, so. And a lot of gyms actually have, you know, they'll do Zumba, they'll do other things there too.
I'll just add a definition there under that category for if we're good with the actual uses.
Do you have something for a theater?
That's actually a legit question. I mean, as, we might as well talk about it.
What'd you say?
Adult entertainment.
By the dispensary.
What did I add to your uses because it might look like. The council debated for a long time, fifteen years ago, about adopting an adult entertainment ordinance and never did, they never. At the time, Fort Smith had a big controversy going and we had some others. The only thing you can do with adult entertainment, my understanding is, you can't necessarily benefit, you can put so many restrictions in the requirements, it takes it almost impossible to locate. You can put distances to school, distances to churches, then there's some other things that you can put. But by adding all of those to the definition or to the requirements, you can just about keep them from being able to locate anywhere. If that's something we want, we need, that's how we need to, we need to have a special.
Well, I think right now, with downtown being dry, there's a very low likelihood that anybody would be interested. I'm saying, since you can't have liquor downtown, there's probably.
Um, okay, so I don't know where this would fit, but we went to Fredericksburg a few weeks ago, and it's like my ultimate downtown goals. I don't know if y'all have been there, but their main street is by far the coolest main street I've ever been on in my life. And they had like wineries with like open window type seating on Main Street. It's really the coolest thing ever. I don't know, I would, we need something specifically for that, or would that roll under liquor stores?
Bars and clubs, I think.
Or restaurant.
Or, I just didn't know what the, like, this, for the specific downtown purpose. If it need its own.
We could, we could go ahead and bar club slash breweries, wineries or something.
Is there not restaurant one here?
Yeah, there is, there's several different kinds of.
I would combine, I would consider combining those two, because typically if you're a, a, a bar, you're gonna have food of some sort there, but now I know that we've had, you know, distilleries actually looking at, you know. So the actual manufacturing of. You open up the fact that Budweiser could come in here and put a mega brewery in a commercial zone. Instead of a manufacturing zone. Cause it's a brewer, but it's very different from.
We, we could put.
A micro brewery that's
Could we put brewery winery, less than ten thousand square foot or something like that to control that?
I think probably the better way to do it is brewing capacity. So many barrels.
Whether they're actually grown on site or. Conditionally used anyway, alright.
So you, you, you get more into, in, in, in the brewery, you feel like you have mega breweries and you have, you have breweries and you have micro breweries and you have nano breweries and it's all based on barrels. How much production they can make. But, but I mean, if you just say brewery, that, that, there's, there're two very different things that can happen.
We, I think probably the best thing to do is just leave the specific title out then and then just consider them under restaurants or bars, whichever one they fall closer to. What do you think?
You know, potentially have a micro brewery or nano brewery downtown in the central business district. Put something in for nano brewery or micro brewery. And you could, you could even divide it up among those that are just brewing beer or those that are brewery beer associated with a restaurant. You know, like fossil code in Fayetteville. Food trucks that park in the parking lot that serve food, but all they do is brew beer itself.
You think Fayetteville probably has restrictions in there, Tony, that we could?
The one that's E-Hog now on Dixon, what was it? Ozark? And it was food.
It was a restaurant with a.
Brewery in it. See, like, to me, that wouldn't be that bad because it wasn't.
Yes, restaurant.
Yeah, but they're like storefronts as a.
Yeah, uh, new province up in Rogers. There's no restaurants associated, it's just.
Now, so it sounds like you've been studying up on these places.
We would like to take a field trip. I just think if.
I know where most of those places are.
If downtown, when it becomes wet, that is gonna be something I think people will. I think it'll be very profitable for someone and they'll jump all over that and we need to be prepared.
It probably will become that.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't bother me.
Like Springville's done that, where you can walk around with it.
Entertainment district.
Shopping sales would be. You can't say the sport.
But that's okay, I have, I'm good.
I could, I could say we're tired and be happy. There's always a second half, so you got that right.
Those eating establishments, I dropped those brought down three ways. You know, depending on which item it's. Kind of, we put, I put in the patients on where the potatoes. So it's got a drive-through, like a fast food mechanic or something like that would have, um, you could have that, or you can, is that approved conditionally in the downtown and in the residential mixed use. Whereas a regular eat-in restaurant, I permit it in all pieces of. And then eating station service of auto, which could be electronic. I wouldn't allow, I put down that we wouldn't allow that at all in a residential mixed use, though, it just didn't seem to fit in a residential neighborhood. Even if it is a mixed use, that would just. So if you disagree with that, tell me.
Do, do you need the case to sell alcohol?
There'll be some good tax revenue coming, which we still need to.
Didn't they tell you it's gonna take two weeks to start alcohol?
Uh, no, they have to have their alcohol, they have to have forty-five hundred dollars worth of alcohol stopped by fifteen. Or they have to renew or redo, go through the.
They got an open date, they pushed it back.
We still, we still remember.
Yes, sir. Okay, if we would move to section four point five, four point four, talks about, uh, we're setting some coverage on a lot. This is something where council changed. I've been under the back end in the late two thousands. And they changed it because we're getting some apartment complexes that were covering up almost the entire lot and weren't leaving any green space. These are all kinds of building, parking lot and not enough green spaces what council told, uh, are you comfortable with leaving that at fifty percent? I just wanna make sure moving forward.
So I have a question on that then. So like the homeboys that just did the one down on Park Street, run that church. If they're putting duplex townhome type things on quarter acre lots or whatever they said they were gonna do, would that not be more than fifty percent of the?
You're typically looking at sixteen hundred square foot houses or two stories, so probably the footprint is around nine hundred thou- nine hundred square foot and those are fifty-five hundred square foot lots, six thousand square foot lots.
Start down, I was looking at that, it looked like there's like twenty feet from the side of the house all the way to the lot line, almost. Seventeen to twenty feet, that's actually pretty big.
We don't see this problem much with single family or residential, even duplex. We see it with apartment complex, that's what the council asked for because they had a sentimental apartment that, uh, just didn't look like it was gonna leave much of the way of grass and council wanted to make sure at the time that, uh, even apartments had some green space with them, you know, kids wanted to go out and play, there was actually some grass out there, not just all asphalt.
Concern with big drainage, is it gonna name of like all the four, four places going in and stuff like that, what, it's gonna be a drainage?
Have more grass you got around it, the better, so I mean, I'm okay with leaving, the problem I, and what I mentioned there is the fact that, uh, you know, we're starting to see lot, smaller lot sizes now and a lot tighter entail, we're hitting more and more zero lot line with these PUDs. It's gonna get harder and harder. I'm not saying we change it, uh, just put it on there and see, you know, any interest in changing it. I'm more happy with fifty percent than one percent, but.
You kind of rip, create a little grass that's there around me, so comfortable with it, or does it comes off the building in the parking lot?
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna talk about minimal monsterns here and then.
Seriously, what about just in places like, you know, like downtown, you would think would be a different role.
This, this only applies to, yes.
So this is for downtown? Oh, this is residential, okay.
Again, multi-family is where we usually address this because we're dealing with big parking lots and, you know, fairly mid-sized footprints.
If we're requiring them though to provide green space in those units, then I guess I don't really care how much space their apartment complex takes up.
Again, this was, I'd say that this was another fair ordinance, uh, this is one where he felt pretty strongly in how he just wanted to make sure that there was plenty of grass at these parking complexes, because we're not seeing more. I think this was sometime shortly after Mike Fitter really got started in the following departments.
But I think if a, like, if a PUD is effectively engineered from a drainage perspective, there's probably some grace that can be given as far as the, the amount of, of green space if it's, if you think of the rowhouse. You're typically not gonna have.
You'd be surprised, I mean, even, I mean, I'm thinking of the ones up on, uh, Plainline Road. Looking at those, I'd say they have fifty percent green space, they do, they have way more than fifty percent. Looking at those, I'd say they have fifty percent green space, they do, they have way more than fifty percent. I mean, those are thirty thousand square foot houses on ten thousand square foot lots.
So they don't look like they're yards.
They don't, there is, I mean, when you figure, when you calculate the actual square footage of the grass, it's, it's more than fifty percent.
I don't think it's a bad, I, I think with our growth rate right now, we're not, we're not trying to stimulate residential growth. We, that's, that's well stimulated already, I, I don't think there's a need to take it off, I don't think that there.
I'm okay, same to place, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, if we were desperate with no building going on and we felt that we need to incentivize something differently, I think there's some levers to turn.
Well, let's go back and talk about lot sizes real quick. These are coming in titles here. The first one, I'm not making any changes, it's all single family stuff and it'll pay, I'm, I'm recommending it same just like it is now, that's the purchase. We increased our one seventy-five from five thousand square foot to sixty-five hundred square foot a couple of years ago. On the next one, multifamily, I think we need to take a look at it. Right now in an R two zone. You can have a minimum lot of five thousand, this would be for a single family house, you can have five thousand square foot. I think that should be probably single family, if we're gonna have a minimum sixty-five hundred in our one seventy-five, it should be the same. We never did change that, this is only in our two zones, so. So this would be an R two zone, if you're building a single family house, now we allow a five thousand square foot lot. Couple of years ago, we changed our lowest single family zoning to sixty-five hundred square foot, I think the two should match. But that would be the smallest single family lot you could have, it'd be sixty-five hundred square foot all across. I'm gonna change that for sixty-five hundred.
That's this one here.
Okay, for a duplex. I came up with. And, you know, that. Would allow forty-five hundred per unit, which is considerably smaller, but usually are dealing with smaller when we're dealing with multifamily. Uh, you can look at it for three flex, it drops down to four thousand square foot and then for four flex, down to thirty-five hundred square foot. Is everybody good with those numbers? Do you wanna adjust those? Do you wanna bump them up?
Where did you get those numbers from? Just based off what we?
Based on what we were already doing and I looked at Saturday and I heard it's already, this is just kinda compared and it was kind of a middle ground. Lincoln's and Springdale and several others, I looked at some out of state even.
The only other thing that we could do to even get my mind wrapped around it would be to go, like, should, tell me something that is that somewhere.
Well, that means, that means a four flex is gonna be, be on a fourteen hundred square foot lot, which is a big lot, I mean, that's a part of the acre. So, uh, you're getting this, some pretty big lot sizes for a four flex, you know, with this, this change. This actually increases from where we're, where we're at before. I also increased the multifamily up to a minimum of three thousand square foot per unit. I think the old ordinance allowed eighteen hundred square foot, which seems terribly small to me. Again, and that's just to get, you know, for everything, just not so packed, put kind together, but.
Larry, from the time, you assume we make these changes, you know, adopt them, wait, you know, or period of time. Anything currently in flight, being planned, is it gonna be grandfathered? So if they've already submitted, plan it or whatever. So, so everything remains as it is until.
As goes into effect.
Right.
Then they would have to meet the new.
Got it.
When, when, when is this going into effect?
I think, let's see, this is March, I hope to be able to vote on this by May maybe. And I need to get with our, our consultant at Garber and see, cause we're gonna have to change zoning maps. To match the new zones that are listed in here with the mixed use commercial loans. So we're gonna, and the thoroughfare commercial, which isn't in the old zoning ordinance. So they're gonna have to do some map modifications and we're gonna coordinate all this, so Mayor Hughes allows.
So any of the subdivisions that are being developed now or playing, I know this is the ambiguous question, but they comply with. With the new version of this, or are there, there deltas of what's being built?
Depends on when they submit, if they submit after it's approved, they'll have to deal with the new, if they submit before.
And do we think of the ones that are submitted, some of them would not meet this requirement?
Uh, let's, let me give you an example, I had a developer, an engineer call me yesterday about a pud submission. And he said, I don't know how long it's gonna be before the developers are actually building, it might be a few years. I said, well, I will tell you, with the new regulations we're talking about, there's gonna be a, a time limit on puds. And he says, but if I submit it before, then I said, well, if you submit it before, you're playing with the old rules. So.
It is approved.
Can I ask a question, and this might be way off? I feel like we have lots of troubles or, are always hesitant for the R one seven five. However, I feel like if they offer it in a pud, we tend to appreciate that more. Can we tie those together, that if there's a submittal in our one seven five, it has to be a pud?
We're gonna eliminate the R one seven five.
I'd like that.
Yeah, cause I'm, we talk, I feel like this is every meeting, they're wanting to do this, cause it's the best way for them to make money.
It's about the only way they can make money.
And that helps us control a little more.
Forcing them to do the pud.
I think it's like, you just do away with the R one seven five, if that's your.
That would be my suggestion.
But they can take away.
And that would still allow them a lot of bit of pud. Now, the only thing about with a pud, and I need to do a little more research on that, but there is, I know there is some language, almost every pud ordinance, including. Language I just wrote. Needs to be compatible with neighborhoods adjacent.
Which says why that guy put that same similar stuff around the outside and then got denser as he got to the inside.
Oh, we'll just need to be careful if we do that, but we don't box ourselves in.
I think if we want it to appear, which I think is smart, on, for multiple reasons, that we're trying to control growth in a reasonable manner. Continually approving our one seven fives is something we're slowing down on, and this would help us, I think, a lot.
But not everybody wants them to help.
I agree with that. Would that, that we would get control over. A lot of the actual design and what green space looks like and stuff like that, if it were in a pud.
I do think there might be some possibilities in the future for, cause we talked to a few of these folks. About certain types of senior housing, where they do want a very small footprint, just because of, they want low maintenance. And you might be shooting your second foot there, I don't know, of course, they could submit as a pud, I guess.
Well, one thing I like about the pud, or even what you're saying is, for the last few months, all I've heard is, how do we control group, how do we control group? So the one thing it does is put control back in y'all hands. So y'all would decide on whether or not it comes in, it doesn't come in, and they have to agree to y'all, but, uh, to develop, so. That, in defense of it, it does give you control. And then control on the other side with the planning commission, city council, it's usually regressed that when you're trying to figure out what's gonna be the intent.
Did you hear what the Fed is gonna possibly doing away with the R one seven five, which is the sixty-five hundred square lots completely?
Right.
And then if somebody wanted to build a development that happens, they'd have to submit that as a pud or something.
Yeah, I've heard contextual complaints about the R one seven five, just from the general smaller. Lot size and all of that, so that discretionary to Mayor Fox's point of probably giving you a little bit of control and.
But, but, I mean, the opposite side, there are people that want the pots there.
Right.
I, and I don't even mind a small lot with a small house if it looks like, I mean, you know, and that's where we get, that's the only way we need to control.
Every meeting you get somebody that's gonna stand up and say, well, how are you gonna, how do you know they're not gonna make them all real?
Right.
But your R one seven five, you come back to, over half the lot has to be green space or. You can't put the house, the bigger house on this, on a small lot.
No.
No, I'm just saying, we get these, we've had these, I think, every month, my almost entire duration on planning commission. And it's hard for us to be like, well, it fits, but we really don't want it that dense. And it's just repeat, 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 and in this scenario, we would be, if it did fit, then great, here's pud, go after it. If it doesn't, then.
Even though you're eliminating it, not eliminating it, you just have to get approval to go forward.
And you could always come back, you know, later on, once again, if we were attempting to stimulate residential growth and needed a smaller lot. To do that, we're not, we're not in that place right now to stimulate residential growth.
Well, if I'm a developer and just saw what played out our last meeting with the one on Park Street and the one on Butler. Here, here I come, you know, like, they're doubling out, building permits and let's roll, so this will help us. Slow that.
I don't hate the idea of X, N, A in the one seven five.
That's my suggestion.
And may agree?
Oh, I think it ought to stay.
You wanna keep it? What's the consensus?
I like control.
I like control.
Do away with?
Growth.
Is that the thing to be away? Are the minimum. Lot size for multifamily, they may want to be increasing them by three hundred to three thousand? On area requirements, currently, we have a twenty-five foot front setback for single family residential. Do we wanna consider increasing that to thirty or thirty-five? The problem, the problem with the twenty-five foot setback is you can't get two cars parked, two cars deep in a driveway. So they're constantly either blocking the sidewalk or they're parked in the street, one of them, after they get a ticket from police partner, then they're in the street, so one or the other. Uh, I think if you went to thirty foot, in some cases, you might be able to stack two cars, okay, did you plan that out? Thirty-five, you definitely can stack two cars, but.
But in all these, you're giving them big front yards and then you're just eliminating their backyard slowly.
Or you're probably eliminating.
Yeah, that. I'm not a fan of changing that, I'm, I'm, leave it, leave it at twenty-five.
Again, this is just for discussion, so.
Which I mean, living in the subdivisions that I've lived in. In some of them, I wouldn't want my kids in the front yard because of the traffic, so I would much rather be closer to the road. Park my car, let it get hit, put my kids in the backyard, and so I would like the closer step back, so the kids are in the back. But we've been in some that are like culsacks and a little bit more off, off the street, you know, off the main thru fair. I feel like Musket Street over there, and the kids all played in the front yard, cause the backyard was tiny, we all played in the culsack and all the neighborhood kids did, but you didn't have through traffic. So not that you can put, through traffic has to be this, but I'm just thinking like, for my kid's safety. I would want the backyard, I would want the cars in the road and let the people hit the cars, don't let them hit the kids. But at the same time, I agree with what you're saying, that it'd be nice to have big, nice front yards and get the cars off the road.
More stuff.
If I've got six cars in my home, I'd still be.
They'll still be on the road, they're still on the side.
I understand ADA requirements and why we don't want cars in sidewalks. But I also hide a doubt, I mean.
All right, I'm so glad my, on my side of the group, I have a sidewalk, so I don't have to deal with it.
Well, I just like.
Well, if you're a runner or a walker.
Yeah.
I mean, no, I get it.
I mean, it makes sense, it's just as a homeowner, it's still hard to park in a way that does it.
If you're a walker or runner, and I am, every single day I walk sidewalks, it's. It's awful when you have to just zigzag out into the road back and forth.
You walk and run in the street, don't you?
Yeah, why have sidewalks?
What if you're blind or in a wheelchair?
Yeah.
And, well, we've got all the elderly that use these little mobility scooters, and they don't play in the streets.
No, I, I get it, I just, like, as a homeowner, that's my property.
Your property ends before the sidewalk.
Agreed, but also, I, you, I get barked at for parking in the street, not close enough to the gutter, but I don't wanna get, might get parked, parked hit. Think it's problematic all the way around.
Well, that's why I'm so happy to don't have a sidewalk.
Larry, can we make a motion to put a sidewalk in front of Fox's house?
We are recording.
It is, it is hard, though, it's hard on both sides.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Well, I think about that when we talked about the six vehicles and Doug even said, well, maybe we need to regulate how they fall, cause we don't want them in yards. When then you throw sidewalks and, uh, and you really do go, all, all three of those counteract with each other.
And then you want green space and you want absorption of water, but you're asking them to do a concrete deal, so it's like, okay, so now what?
We'll talk about that right now, because, uh, we're gonna get into parking requirements and. One of the things that we've had an issue with. On residential, I'm not there yet, and I'll go ahead and talk about that, is right now, the requirements are, you have three off-street parking places. Every residence is required to have, one of those parking spaces can be inside of a garage. Well, I did, I've done independent polling, the last couple of weeks, I've actually been walking neighborhoods looking. And anytime there's a garage open, I've taken the opportunity to inspect inside of the garage. Ninety-five percent of the garages in the subdivisions I've walked in could park cars.
Yeah.
Why do we have it forbidden in a parking ward since it says you can, that can count as one parking space if it's reality, it is, it doesn't count as one parking.
We need more storage units.
Empty garage. Like Chris, it is, you just wanna make those three off-parks, from parking spaces, parking spaces. Most drivers have enough room to make a third lane for parking, a lot of people do it on their own. We can make that a requirement, if that's something we wanna do.
Concrete?
More concrete.
Less drainage.
Green.
More drainage.
Well, more.
Other alternatives?
Surface drainage.
Less cars.
Can we allow them to do gravel?
Or can it be like where the tires are, you know, like, even like.
Yeah, I don't remember what it's called.
Parking strips.
Yeah.
Yes, we allow those now, if they wanna do parking strips, they can just pull them to.
Nobody has.
We actually, we actually encourage that on some of the older remodels, we encourage them to do that, but so far, nobody's taking a bet on it.
Cause you see it like, some of your higher density stuff that you watch, that we watch on H T V and all that, they've got some of that.
We, we copied some standards, just so that we could hand them out if anybody wanted to do it.
Then, when they put your sidewalk in, yeah, you need that.
Okay, something else that's come up in, it's come to the planning commission a couple of times, they've asked for variances. On one bedroom apartments, especially if they're youth or senior citizens, the, the requirement now is that they have the three parking spaces per unit, but. We've allowed them to go down to two parking spaces, even one parking space, is that something we wanna do permanently? If it's a one bedroom apartment, obviously, there's not gonna be teenage kids there.
Yeah, you'd think two, one for, if there was two heavens inside of the one bedroom, or a visitor with the one.
Exactly.
Well, that's it, cause you think about home health and mills of will and all of that, maybe nice to.
Minimum of two.
I might reduce that to, it could be in a one-bedroom only. Theaters is another one, I've looked at a bunch of different standards and I don't like any of them. I don't know what the right answer is, maybe, you know, that's better I do from this than I do. The, the way it reads now is one space for four seats. On a theater, I mean, if the theater packed, that doesn't seem like that's gonna be enough. I mean, most people probably, I mean, there are people that are taking their kids, so there might be four people per car. I think most of the time there's gonna be two people per car. So one.
You wanna meet the middle?
Yeah, I think that's the change.
But so that one for the.
Huh? That's if we got a theater, and I know that's probably, we're not gonna see that for a long time.
So but if, but if I have it, I'd love for us to have a performing arts theater, cause our school doesn't cut it, um, for, for that, but. You know, if there was a theater downtown.
Doesn't apply C P D.
Right, doesn't apply C P D.
Doesn't require, doesn't require parking regulations by C P D.
Yeah, that's all I need now.
Because it's walk.
Yeah, because they're downstairs, they're not required to have their own individual parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does, does they able to find it in there?
I don't remember the differences between, but I looked at.
This rate effect, it's kind of huge part of. I would say they're probably.
I'd say they're going on a break down, it just seems to me odd.
I would say they're gonna two seat per car.
Maybe not be anything we ever have to worry about.
Well, if we know our average household is what, two and a half people, then base it off that.
And you've also got employees too, that you got back to re-invested.
Yeah.
I don't think I had any others there. Larry, I'll take the obvious, none of this applies to J C's school stuff. School has their own building. Are there, there's city parking requirements for the school?
I think so, let me, let me look here just a second.
There's that again, too, there's state stuff, though.
Yeah.
Speaking of that. The hotel motel on my. It was kinda confusing to me too, but the way it is now, one guest room plus additional. So you have one parking space per guest room plus for every camera, you have to have one additional. I'm assuming that's probably for employees.
Yeah, that's, I think that's fair.
Sounds like more than what they have now.
Yeah.
Some of the things you pull over. Of course, if people knew that part, it would be better.
Maybe another section, cause this is all commercial. I did change the language in here, the planning commission, again, again, is very familiar with this. I've changed it, uh, the language in here now for like retail that has storage. Uh, say it's a Dollar General that has a large warehouse storage in the back. We now calculate their square footage for parking based on the retail space only. So we subtract the, the storage space, cause a lot of these in Dollar General are a good example. They have big storage rooms in back and they shouldn't have to be providing parking for that storage space. So we subtract that and only include the retail in our calculations for parking.
What about the trucks that bring in all the stuff that fills in that? Okay.
Here's schools and institutions right here. And I looked at some other cities when I was looking at these too. I actually changed some of these, so we do need to talk about it, or at least I've got. Mark and Green, where I won't input. Nursery, kindergarten, daycare, one space per classroom, plus stacking space for drop-off and pickup. Didn't specify how much stacking space. Elementary, one space per classroom, a stacking space for drop-off and pickup. Again, I didn't specify how much, cause I don't know what that is. Middle school. Stacked space is a big, big issue for the city as well as the school, obviously. And right now, if you can look at the new middle school, they don't have near enough stacked space and they're actually using Biding Grove Road as their stacked space. They set it the four-way stop and they don't move because they're waiting to pick up the kids, so they're at the stop sign and they're just not moving.
Should've been like for the dance.
They're like, yeah.
On the kindergarten, the daycare, are there supposed to have two people in the classroom by code, I think?
I have no idea.
I think they're supposed to have two, like a preschool and stuff, so, so one space for.
They don't have to full-time, like the pre-K and the kind, well, there's only one in kindergarten, but as far as like a daycare.
I think daycare.
Yeah, daycare would, but pre-K does not, and then.
This, I mean, these, you might need to change, I don't know.
I would say like daycare, you mentioned, they've had two programs.
Yeah. Well, it's depending on how many kids.
Yeah.
So if they have three kids in there, then they can have a floater, but.
You got an error, another error on the side.
Well, if you've got it twenty percentage greater than ten, and I mean.
Yeah.
You go up, right?
But he's saying that it requires to have more staff at a daycare than it does a regular school.
Gotcha.
You want me to mark that?
Well, we have the basic for classroom.
I would say we need that, add a little more to the.
Anybody who like in the, the new daycare, in the mornings and afternoons, what it's like, is it absolutely crazy out right by there?
It's not, I mean, to me, it's not, that's, more stacking space is important at daycare than a actual parking spot.
Do we wanna include a distance for stacking space? I think that was the main reason why I, I highlighted it is I thought we needed to have that discussion. Cause that would affect any new, new construction, new schools.
Yeah, cause I mean, a middle school, that's really a problem, cause the middle school's a problem. That's gonna be a problem for a long time, because there's no, there's no simple solution to how that's gonna change.
Yeah, the elementary would be a hundred times worse if they didn't have that driveway that goes all the way back.
It sure would.
Head wraps all the way to Mont Street and sometimes if they don't move fast enough, especially in a rainy day, it'll be backed up on Mont Street. They'll probably pull it out when it stacks. And so it's, and relatively for us, the middle school is not, not that bad, but you're right, every single day. It'll be stacked up up high roofs, every day.
Is there, is this something we wanna have a discussion about, or?
What you gonna do, that sounds like we are.
But there's nothing we can do about the middle school, but I mean, I, I don't know how, how do we protect it for later? If, if they go, decide to go to another one, you know, three, four years from now.
You gotta make sure it's not. You know, coming to pick up kids and you've only got relatively enough space for thirty cars, it's something wrong.
Yes. So Larry, it's already saying the state is not attempting to dictate any of this, or this, or we don't have a conflict.
I mean, I don't know all the state rules, so don't ask me, but we do have large-scale development authority over the school, so.
Yeah.
I feel the same with it, like, I think the stacked space is way more important for all of these than the actual.
We had a number of.
Part of the issue too, I mean, the middle school, and they did this on their own. They added some parking in front that they didn't originally have in original plans, and they are glad that they did.
Yeah.
I think there's a difference too, of you have, you know, the. You know, maybe an elementary school or whatever else that's mainly purpose of school, but then you have the gymnasium and things like that. That's more of, if you think of your entertainment components and all that, where you get a lot of people. I don't know if you have to separate those.
Be nice if we do like the percentage of bus riders in a school, cause that's not, you don't need that for your stack. But whatever your percentage of car riders, and it's gonna be different for every school. But if you had maybe a percentage of that, you need to accommodate for.
Do, do y'all have any of those numbers, J C? Do you even have a thought?
I, I mean, I'm sure they do, but I mean, just looking at town, I mean, what, the kids used to walk to school. I mean, now they're trying to get picked up a block away, so we run four, two routes. I mean, every driver in town are two routes, I think, so.
Well, and how bad would it be if the middle school is even manageable because so many kids walk, particularly up to elementary school? So like, we'll get in line to pick up Ellison, and then my nephew will walk up from the middle school and be able to get into my vehicle. So if you took that away, or campus was ever more spread out, you're gonna, you're looking at even more space needed for.
Especially, there's a bunch of them that walk to the high school, get with their brothers and sisters.
Yeah.
In the parking lot.
I'd say probably the middle schools, uh, and junior high has the largest.
Don't forget about your road extended, it'll make that a little.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's gonna make it worse, because.
Well, they're back at Biding Grove, but I mean.
Well, right now, they're blocking that road, road that's building for an ass, it's not new deal. But when it is open all the way through, all those cars are just gonna be parked there in the road and they're in traffic, they're not in.
Can we add another lane to that? A stacked lane.
We find a way to split it with them.
Pull into J C's driveway and connect down. Circle drive through J C.
They're almost in the two, because they protect us.
And, and so that's. So we need the language in there to protect us.
I think so, but, you know, it's.
It's just, what does the language look like?
Yeah, and how long does it need to be? I, I don't know what it needs to be. I mean, if we needed to supply parking during pickup for a hundred and fifty cars or two hundred cars, well.
It'd be based off the capacity of.
To figure out what that is.
So it'd be based off the capacity of the school and then the percentage of kids that actually get picked up?
Do we need to sit down with the school and ask?
So you need, you'd need those numbers as far as.
Well, I mean, I think we need to get that.
I need to just draw up, get to the one, to say, hey, no, but maybe those numbers out there.
Well, between you and me, I, I've had this discussion with the school before, when they're building the elementary addition, my last big addition that they built on the north side. Uh, we asked them to put that driveway all the way around the, uh, north side of the building. And they said, we can't afford to do it, was the answer. And, and, you know, I, and I said at the time, I said, it's just gonna be that many more cars and push back into the city streets, blocking.
Correct. Which I wonder when you're asking the state for money, cause typically that's how we do. It is.
If it's required, it might make.
That's what I'm saying, if it's required, would they throw some money towards it?
No.
Instructional space, instructional space.
Yeah.
They don't pay for the ground straightest space, they don't pay for the stolen.
What is schools zoned as? Are they in agriculture?
They're not in any zone, uh, condition.
That's what I'm saying, churches.
Churches, uh, municipal buildings, schools are allowed in any zone.
See, I mean.
I would look at total number of students. Per school and come up with some sort of percentage, cause I understand the bus and walker deal, but a lot of that changes daily or based on the school.
Or it's raining or not.
Or it's raining, or it's hot, or it's cold, or.
That's true.
Um, so if you just want even pool and then a percentage, you need enough space for a percentage of those students, whatever it may be, thirty percent, I don't know.
They're always thinking thirty, cause I guarantee thirty percent is not, I mean, as far as what is already stacking, I would, I would think that's a pretty safe number.
Right.
And at least it protects us a little bit.
And there is, each school's different, cause like the high school, we don't have that problem.
No. And you don't have that space.
We got, we got the, we got the drive-through, they stack too wide, and the parents that pick up, and then you have all the kids out in the parking lot. And there's a, a space for that to all be, not block each other off.
Well, there's from the high school now, they can't, when they fall in the parking lot, they can't go back to the south because.
But as far as like the actual high school, it's not.
That's right.
It's great.
Yeah.
It would be your, your, your other schools that have a lot more parental interaction with getting kids.
Well, like Larry said, the only reason that we say about the elementary is because it cuts through the school's property. If that was sitting on a road, eh, you would have half the school zone blocked for like twenty minutes every evening.
But certainly, for real, not unique, look at how, how hollow school there, on, on Bruple, I mean, you can't.
Yeah.
Look at Chick-fil-A.
Seeing what's Chick-fil-A. What's Chick-fil-A at that intersection?
What's tough, the way that's classified too, is we know that schools can say, okay, this is no longer the middle school, we're gonna make this the junior high school. Uh, so you could, you can set it this way that that can, could change over time.
Yeah, I just highlighted that for discussion, just to see if that's something we wanna include or not.
As, I would look at others, but I think a good starting point would be thirty-ish percent, cause you'll get.
Oh, I was a little disappointed with middle school, but they've really put in very little space inside there at all.
But see, each building though has a, J C, a maximum capacity of fire, cause so.
Yes, right, yeah, so is, is that the number that you can use?
And those. Uh, maximum capacity to determine what, what that should be.
We can certainly.
I would say so.
Just wait till we finish this other building before.
Yeah.
Where's it gonna be?
Where's it gonna be? North Mont Street.
Oh, oh, wow.
Yeah. Okay, I'll be back here.
But see, if that junior high had more kids too, that will pull out.
Pull out some of them.
Yeah.
Now. We're talking about parking, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Mr. Orange, you and I may have already, I know we've talked about this, and I think you told me we already had an answer, but just in case, since we're talking about this, just in general. Um, you know, to bypass, we got Casey's coming in, and then we have some other fast food restaurants looking. And Mr. Orange, should correct me if I'm wrong, do we have anything that protects this as far as the connectable driveways? Is that something we need to talk about?
That's in the subdivision ordinance, and I'm moving to that now, I'll hurry through that, cause I don't get late. I will send all this out to y'all, or probably Monday. Subdivision ordinance, we made quite a few changes too, and I'm gonna try to highlight those real quick. One thing that we've actually stuck in the ordinance, we've actually, it sounds like something that's silly, but the signature blocks on flats are never uniform. Uh, we always have issues with not having the right signature blocks, and we're actually sticking the signature blocks in our ordinance. Let's say this is how they have to look and how they have to read. Okay, on the final plat approval. Let me go back to David's comments real quick, Mayor, um. I'm not finding it real quick, so I'll just tell you what we've done. On commercial development, and this is under the large scale, we've put in some language that require on Highway sixty-two that there be connectivity. Actually, we're putting language in there that on all commercial development, that unless there's some physical reason why they can't do it, that they connect parking lots. And that's to keep people from, pull out of the road, pull back in. So on all lots, on Highway sixty-two, we've added some language subs- specific to Highway sixty-two. That says they have to provide additional easements to provide an access strip along the highway where no driveways to the highway are present. So like, if the next property doesn't have driveway, because it's limited control highway, they have to at least provide the easements. So that the access road can continue down through along Highway sixty-two. So we put that in the ordinance so that we're not ending up with a piece of the property they're land-locked. And it hasn't been kind of an issue yet, but as we start developing along bypass, it's gonna be, it's right now, there's six hundred and sixty feet apart where they didn't have an access point. So you're gonna end up with businesses in the middle, and if we don't provide that access strip, uh, they can get landlocked really. Uh, we have discovered recently, we were told that you can't add driveways unless you take, you know, congressional. It has to go through Congress in Washington, D.C., because of the type of highway, if it's a limited access highway is the way it was developed and funded. So that can't change without going to Congress. But we did find out that they can be moved somewhat within. And we also found out that they can be moved from one location to another. Uh, there's actually two that are landlocked by Sundowner, when Sundower got cut off. And they're telling us that if that property owner that owns that driveway says, I don't want it, we can move it somewhere else. So we're finding out some things, but on Snyder Grove, we're actually gonna be able to move it a little bit to a line there with Blunt Street. So, uh, we're finding out there are some flexibility. But the ordinance will have restrictions on sixty-two development where you can't, you have to provide easements so that they can continue access. On final plat approvals, in the past, and I think we need to have a lot of discussion about this, cause there's problems and costs. Uh, developers now can bond their improvements. So let's say. So let's say, uh, developer is about halfway done with his subdivision. He decides he's far enough along, he can start building houses, but he's got no streets, utilities aren't done, streets are just gravel, mud. He can start building houses if he can get final plat approval from the city by bonding all the improvements that he has left. What we've done in the past, because it's an option, is we've required them to give us a detailed analysis of his estimated cost of everything left to be done, engineer's estimate. And we've required them to do a hundred and twenty-five percent of that in form of bond. So that if they do go out of business, the city has a hundred and twenty-five percent of the estimated cost that we can bring them there, complete. Problem with that is, Jackie can tell you, we start building houses on streets and our page, it's, it becomes a mess. You get contractors working on these streets and leaving ruts and leaving mud everywhere. And then you've got utility companies trying to work around the house builders and contractors, and it just becomes a convoluted mess. And they track a lot of mud out of the roads, streets aren't paved. Um, we talked some time back about eliminating those as an option for developers and just saying that, oh, you can't. Until that subdivision is done, complete, all the improvements in place, we can't give you final plat approval. While the city's allowing to bond, I mean, Farmington I know does, and Farmington has the same complaints we have.
Is there any way to require like wash zones or a buffer, like you have to do?
They're required that by federal law anyway. Does that mean it happens regularly? No, we, we, and we have to backtrack and try to figure out who did it a lot of times. Yeah, we will call somebody if we can find out who did it. But we're not usually there when it happens, so.
I think one of those bonded after having some trouble with the detention free.
We're still having problems in Mountain View, I know.
Yeah, I, I've never liked the bonding. I think they ought to pay for it, uh, and once again, we're not trying to stimulate residential growth right now, we can always move that lever later on. I think they need to have their streets done and all that.
I know that you had a developer call you today.
So Ted Cox called today. And he actually talked to Jackie, didn't like Jackie's answer, so he requested to talk to me, but in essence. His sidewalk expansion in Schneider Grove, am I correct? Jackie, in Schneider Grove, he's gonna have to come in and pay us fifty thousand dollars. And he doesn't wanna pay us fifty thousand dollars, he wants a bond. And because then his, and his comment is, listen, in the long run. I, I have to get y'all approval in the end, the sidewalks are gonna go in, you know the sidewalks is gonna go in, if you just worry about your investment. I'll put a bond up, and that way it guarantees y'all long term, you know, you have the insurance policy. But that stops me as a developer to have to write the fifty thousand dollar check today. As I'm trying to get a development off the ground, so I can make money to be able to do that. So it's just, all it's doing is saving them today. What he's trying to bond a insurance package with to go tomorrow, right, or six months from now. And in essence, but we have to be protected, and so the hope is that the cash bond protects us. And then it's up to y'all to decide, in the long run, he pays the fifty thousand dollars, he builds a sidewalk, he'll give us fifty thousand dollars back. At the end of the development, he's just trying to save the money upfront.
You can buy a loan sheet, because then you can.
Yes.
Yeah, and the sidewalks, and what, I mean, we just added that fairly recently, according to, yeah, it's, it's, it's the streets and.
So I can actually go back for even an older discussion, and the reason why we started doing cash bond with sidewalks and then with is because we used to allow them to bond.
Right.
And what would happen is especially, you know, like, late, uh, early two thousand ten, when the building went to nothing. We had subdivisions that just stood there without anything happening for a long time. Well, these bonds are for two years, so they expire. After two years, we were stuck, and we ended up having four large sections of sidewalk. So what the cash bond does is that the cash is there, we can go build them whenever we want to if they don't. And that's different than a bond expiring after two years and they're worth less.
I, I do know, I've had a lot of complaints of folks that live close to new subdivisions that have been built to where. You know, they go sling the red mud all over the streets and that. One person who announced selling their house today was, uh, was, uh, was complaining to that a lot, uh, just off the block street over.
Jackie deals with those developers and contractors all the time.
And I know they're, they're supposed to have a street sweeper come do all of that, but it just.
I will say the Hudson High folks are doing a good job now, they've got a sweeper, and they've been really doing a good job keeping their swept, um. I think, as far as I know, we haven't any problems with starting.
There's been some problems, but when I call them, they usually get out there and clean it up for me.
We had more problems with the, the individual home builders, where they back up a concrete truck into the mud, and then when he leaves, he tracks it all up the highway. And that's an individual builder who's not gonna have a street sweeper. And, you know, his method for cleaning that up is push broom and, and they're not gonna do it.
For, for bonding sidewalks, I can carry it, but I think that's a great thing, it's every, it's the infrastructure of the streets that I don't think we have.
Well, to get final plat approval, it needs to be finished, you can't.
Spot those for several provisions, they're right now, they actually require a cash bond, they have to practice cashing out. And then we reimburse them as they go, so they get the money back.
If they just bonded two subdivisions, one's okay, the other one we're still in trouble with. Right, so I think the bonding part goes away, you finish that, and then eventually it's a final plat.
Yeah, okay, that's what we'll do. See if there's anything else, there's probably other stuff here we need to mention, but it's late. Homeowners association, there is a section in the. Language for HUDs, it says a homeowners association or similar organization must be created if development, the HUD includes common open spaces, alleyways. Lots of divisions anymore include common open areas, but, um, sometimes it's just, you know, a sign. Sometimes it's a whole drainage area or a detention pond, there's a lot of different things that is common. And we've got language in there now that says that they have to have a homeowners association if there's common land. Um, there isn't anything in there. And I don't know what protections we can put in there, Parker, to protect if that homeowner association goes away.
On my list, I think.
Is it, okay, we talked about this in the.
Yeah. My idea was, as I was reading this and thinking about it. And I came back to our discussion we had about private sewer infrastructure. So my thought was, if the homeowners association dissolves. The public land reverts to the city, and I know you're going, oh, we don't wanna take control of it, but. It would also, the language I put in here was. The city would create urban, it was urban service improvement district. Remember, we talked about.
I don't know if that was the word, but it's.
Urban Improvement District. And every property owner in the, that subdivision would then get a fee. From the city for the city's cost in maintaining that.
And we can do that by ordinance?
Yeah.
Is, is that something y'all wanna consider? And we've had this happen, Willow Creek's the example. They've been deported, they dissolved their homeowners association, they have land in the subdivision that they no longer maintain, it's about an acre and a half.
It's grown up.
Grown up mass.
Uh, they also have signs, they have at least two signs, one of them is landscaped, that usually I see volunteers out there doing stuff, planting flowers and stuff. But nobody is actually responsible anymore, because the homeowners association went away.
But I, I knew you were like, we don't want it. Why don't we take it and then we'll just build all the.
Yeah, one in Willow Creek's an acre and a half.
We'll, we'll create.
Ditch, I mean.
We'll just create an urban improvement district. By ordinance, but are we gonna have to maintain that property? We would maintain it, but then we would bill every homeowner.
But they'd be paying.
We would become PMF.
We just hate to have to go maintain multiple sporadic.
That's kind of ugly, I think.
It's probably a better option than it growing up and nobody takes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they want to re-control that property, would they have to establish a new?
I'm sure there's a process for it, I don't know what it would be, but if they can dissolve one, I'm assuming they can start one again.
I'm just thinking like in my household, we'd totally ignore it until you started finding me for it, and my husband would be like, oh, well, I'll go mow it.
The reason that one dissolved is because everybody did ignore it except for one property owner, paying the property taxes on their land himself, because he didn't wanna see it. And he was keeping everything mowed, but when he got to a certain age, was too old to do it, he just basically called all the neighbors on that. They dissolved it. So is that the better option then, go ahead and leave that number to him?
So say, at least if you have it, you can do it, because you can always ignore it, just like everybody else did.
But it is durable.
So if they dissolve the homeowners association, we don't have to do that, correct? Or, and, and that's where I'm trying to determine is.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to do it.
So what, if we, if we don't do it, what else?
I, I assume you could do. If you wanted to. Become the owner of the property, for it to become city land as opposed to abandoned land. Um, when they dedicated it in the flats, you would have to. Put something in there that if the homeowners association ceases to exist, the property reverts into the city.
Right. But again, that would be just an option.
Yeah, I'm just stuck on, I know it's not a high volume now, it's just the, the maintenance, if we had. You know, multiple sporadic places that you had to go keep, keep the grass, grass cut on there.
So say, what you can do is you can set out for bid, right, and you would pay someone to do it, and then you would pretty much set the fees out.
Get an estimate on what it was gonna cost and then set the fees based on.
Cause that's what a lot of the bigger companies do, do they not, they don't provide all of the cleaning.
I don't know, this is the first time I've seen a homeowners association dissolve.
So do we, do we really wanna be in that business? That's, you know, or do we really?
Well, don't we, did you wanna have this abandoned property that? You can't do anything.
You have to choose which one you'd rather have, do you want the abandoned land, or do you wanna be in the business?
Do you want the phone calls about, hey, you wanna do something about that overall area?
Or the complaint about the fees for maintaining there?
So can you, could we take the land and sell it, if it's sellable?
It's on the auction, perhaps, there's about twenty times now, nobody will bid on it, because it's got.
So you can do anything with it.
Well, we could bid on it and become the owners of it. But it, it doesn't necessarily answer the question though, because the answer may as could be yes, just because no one wants that land. But if someone, if someone else did it, it was a premium piece of land.
Three or five acres of.
Yes.
Your grain space.
And so is, is the question yes, that, that we could, in essence, possess the land or sell the land? And if we become the P O L.
I mean, if it, if it goes up for auction.
The city has first options. Yeah, I think the city actually has first option by law on any tax parcel that's in the back. So we can bid on it and pay probably whatever the back taxes are, and then resell it.
And we sell it.
I think as long as we have the options.
I think it's.
And I just don't want us, I don't want us to be forced into, you know, HOA goes away, now we're the property maintenance of, you know, this HOA that we don't want anything to do with it.
We'll put the language in there like Parker wrote it, and you'll have the option. One last thing I want your input on real quick, and this is definitions of subdivision. Um, right now, we've got some exemptions in the ordinance, and of a division of land in parcels of five acres or more. Does there need to be a not to exceed number there? I know the county has a not to exceed, I think a five tracks, Parker, do you remember?
I can't remember if it's five or four.
But anyway, they've got a number that's not to exceed. Right now, if somebody had a hundred and sixty acre tract, they get divided into five acre parcels for that entire hundred and sixty, and they wouldn't, they, they could bypass subdivision. Because they'd be exempt, they have to go through the informal, but not formal. I think there probably needs to be some limit, yes, five acre tracks, they don't have to go through the normal procedures, but not to exceed five lots or six lots, whatever you all wanna make.
They need to be a cap on it somewhere.
But I think there needs to be some.
What's the purpose of the cap?
Hmm.
What's the purpose of the cap?
If it's bigger than that, they have to go through subdivision.
Streets and, you know, you have to put in the sidewalks, all of the.
I'm just thinking of like.
Infrastructure.
So if you had thirty acres, and you wanted to do six five acre plots, you're saying now that's a subdivision.
If, if six is the number we like.
Right, but if you.
Yeah.
As long as you keep it under that and sell them off.
Now, just list five acres, if there were five acres or so.
Cause I mean, five acres is a big.
It's a good, simple hand.
Yeah, like, do, do we need to regulate? Cause it's zone, it's regulated by zoning already, correct?
Uh, this could be within our city limits, or it could be outside, it could be within our, our growth area. We do, we do regulate the subdivision of land in our growth area. So maybe those two, one mile outback, or say, which means there's those zones.
If you had. A hundred acres and you divide it up into five acre lots, and you've got. You, you have twenty lots with houses on them that don't have.
Streets.
Streets and drainage and everything else in there, so, but we still would have to provide services there.
Well, it, it really affects the process, it has to go through more than anything else, it affects with, uh. Informal subdivision, basically they slap a plaque down in front of the planning commission as a final plaque. And it's, it's handled more like a lot split than it is a subdivision. Uh, whereas a subdivision has to go through a more intense process with an engineer designing it and putting it in where the drainage, uh.
I'm just saying, like, if you use the, you know, roll back to the sidewalks in, because they're a subdivision.
It would, it wouldn't.
But that would seem silly on five acre plots with really wide road frontages.
Actually, the, the requirements for roads and stuff, it doesn't matter how many lots there are, if you, you're building a road, it's gonna have to be standard anyway. We allow on any tract of land, you can build up to two lots on a property. Up to four that's family. So anything over that, you'd have to build a street regardless, it doesn't have which process to do. But basically, all this would change the process they have to go through, it's more of an intense process to do a full subdivision than it is an informal plan.
So just to get the engineering side of it, that's your goal here, is that there's more engineering involved?
There's more land affected, so. On the basis of that, it's probably gonna be more of a need to have an additional step.
I can see where like the bigger lots would be, you know.
Right.
What, what should?
What he said, they remind me of something, if there is a five acre lot, I mean, every house, every single family home, every building is required to put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's what I said, it doesn't affect.
Just the engineering side of it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Not in a growth area, we can't, we can't.
Not, yeah, not in the growth area.
What are the lot sizes on Picket Ridge, are those like one or two acres?
Larry.
Quite true.
The county, county's exemptions are. An unspecified number of tracts, each of which are at least forty acres. Or, uh, division of land into four parcels. Three of which must be at least five acres, and one which may be at least one acre. So they limit really that. Any more than that, it's gotta go through planning.
So they're gonna, they're gonna wish they're in our planning district, because we're less len, we're more lenient than the county is.
So do we need to mirror the county?
I was gonna say, you said, I was gonna say the same.
That's up to y'all, I mean.
If they're a mile and a quarter outside of the city limits, they're stricter, and then they may wanna slide over to us to get an easier deal. But then we may end up being, taking them in at some point.
But then they're gonna get the servant, the services, you know, being, being in that landing area.
Here in the county, so we're the same. No matter how far you're away from our city limits for.
Yeah, I agree, it simplifies things, I think.
Just like in the same county?
I agree, yeah, as long as the county's remains.
As long as they don't change.
They have lots of long and dark, that, that sounds, yeah, that sounds familiar.
Well, if nothing else, we're guessing that way we should cap it at, and I give it's a good down line. And, and the fact like you're saying, if we match out a name, that's, it, it keeps everything a pretty streamlined.
And then the other comment that I wanted to make was on, this is actually on informal. I guess this actually falls in line with the previous question.
Keep small, or those bigger than one.
On informal flats. On informal flats now, which would be minor subdivision, we call them either thing. In the new ordinance, I've got it listed both ways, minors, minor subdivisions or informal flats. They can, they can submit as a minor now if they have existing driveways, so that means. No new streets, that means no new utilities, so let's say somebody builds on an existing road with existing utilities. They can have a minor subdivision now. Now we don't have any limit on the number of lots in a minor subdivision, it just says that if they don't have any new dedications of driveways or utilities. They can file as an informal. Um, that, my question on that was, do we wanna cap minor subdivisions to a set number of lots as well? Now, this could be any size lot, this could be a, you know, sixty-five hundred square foot, which is in our one seventy-five building. Um, again, it's about density, you know, six lots don't have the impact that fifty lots would have. So more scrutiny, I would think, would be necessary for fifty lots than six lot. If they're gonna go through the informal process, which is a pretty simple process, I think it should be capped somewhere, and that's the number I'm looking at, y'all. So you can do the length of Vine Grove Road all the way to Vine Grove, and say it's an informal plat, it'd be a cap for them. Is that something that interests you?
So you adding the two to four, two?
Yeah. And the reason it says more than two is because two is a lot split, it classifies as a lot split under the ordinance, they don't have to do anything. I mean, they have to submit it, it's the minimum standard we approve it.
I think so too.
Okay, I'll be sending this out, you can look at all the blue highlights, which again, all blue highlights are new language I've put in. Uh, anything you see in green and stuff, I just wanted your input on, yellow is for me, you can ignore that, that's just stuff I'm gonna go back and check in this chat, so. I'll send this out to you, and I know you all have experienced this before.
For sure.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for the snacks. Whoever brought the snacks.
Right, I'll get out of here, so y'all can talk about the game.